Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the thirteenth day of January term. All were present at eight fifty-seven. Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. Excuse me. The agenda was approved as presented. The minutes from the Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, meaning were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. The closed minutes from the Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, meaning were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. The expenditures for the following were approved and paid. Sheriff's Civil Fund, Sheriff Runbridge, Villains and Grounds, Mercy Management, and County Clerk. Commissioner Larson shared a prepared statement. He said that commissioners were told that the county clerk Rick Watson had been served a lawsuit on Friday, February seventh, but learned after the commission meeting that the motion to dismiss had been filed on Monday, the tenth. He also stated that the county clerk submitted the lawsuit without the commissioner's knowledge. He stated that the county clerk followed procedure or routine, and the attorney acted without authority. He requested that the following be part of the record. One, there was no commissioner awareness or input on the motion to dismiss. Two, there was a failure to consult with the commission. Three, there was a violation of proper authority and accountability. Clerk Rick responded to Larson's statement that he has always sent county lawsuits to the county attorney and the insurance company without fail. He also stated that Larson's allegations instructing the attorney to file a motion, instructing the attorney to file a motion to dismiss was completely false, and that, and also stated that he was unaware that a motion to dismiss was filed on Monday. Commissioner Larson made a motion to withdraw the motion to dismiss. After Larson read his statements, Mike Rosier and Josiah Town raised their voices in opposition to the action taken by Clerk Rick. Rick explained that he has used this procedure to notify the county attorney and the county insurance company each and every time this type situation arises. Rosier submitted a sunshine request. Beth Wilson asked how the lawsuit would proceed with a potential conflict of interest on Larson's part as his son had resigned or had signed the petition. Commissioner Larson stated that there was no conflict, as he would have signed the petition on the lawsuit if he was not a commissioner. Commissioner Bradley demanded everyone stop yelling. Outbursts continued. Commissioner Larson stated his opposition to the prior commissioning, commission hiring the county attorney without the current commission having the option. Commissioner Larson accused Commissioner Stone as knowing that a motion to dismiss had been filed. Commissioner Stone denied knowing. There was much back and forth among the commissioners. Commissioner Larson asked for a second to his motion. There was outbursts among individuals in the room. Greg Westhuizing asked for clarification that the motion is to withdraw the motion to dismiss the lawsuit and a decision on the lawsuit to be made by the commission. The commission confirmed. After discussion, Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion to withdraw the motion to dismiss. The motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, yes, no. Stone being no. It was also stated that county clerk is to notify the commission prior to notifying the attorney. Commissioner Stone stated he always does what he believes is best for the county. Charlie Kidwiler addressed the commission regarding their decision to turn his portion of Division Road into Dave, in Davis Township into a private road. Commissioner Bradley shared that they have not made that decision. Charlie continued that former Davis Township board members all found paperwork stating that the road was open. Commissioner Don Bullock used the paperwork to justify installing two culverts in the road. Charlie alleged that current board members are getting their roads cleaned in mode. He also shared that Division Road had additional rock added to it when, within the last five years. Charlie suggested that he get individuals to attend a commission meeting to discuss opening the road. He requests notification anytime the commission discusses the road. The commission signed a letter to Bob Parks stating that he had received their appointment to the Clinton Township Board. The commission signed an employee contract with Michael Edget to represent the county in the petition for the establishment of the Stone Ridge Common Sewer District. All costs incurred to be paid for by the residents of the proposed subdivision. The group discussed the solicited environmental testing they will be conducting near the former TC PNL power plant. There was ongoing discussion we are in the Chapter one hundred agreement and solar power farm between Commissioner Larson and Amy Nold. Commissioner Stone stated that Chapter one hundred agreement guarantees funds to the public entities in the area. He also shared that there are bonds in place that would remove the panels should the Beaver Tail project go bankrupt. There was ongoing discussion on the Chapter one hundred agreement. Mike Rosier stated that the people do not want to incentivize the solar farm with the tax debate. Dennis Barrow shared that the Southwest one hundred road train car in Davis Township has no signs, only markers. He shared that the small erosion on the north side of the bridge will be repaired. Dennis also shared that he contacted Joseph Campbell about Northwest five oh one road in Shawnee Township. The county does not have records on roads, road width of a nineteen sixty private road off of Northwest five oh one road. Dennis confirmed by stating that the first half of the bridge inspection cycle is complete. The bridge on Southeast four fifty road in Leesville will have a weight reduction from twelve ton to six ton. The bridge on Southwest three fifty-one road in Fairview may possibly get closed this inspection or in two years at the next inspection. Its weight restriction will get reduced from eight ton to four ton. The Corps will not permit replacing the bridge with culverts in lieu of a complete replacement. Dennis stated the armor has completed mowing on the west side of the county. There was discussion regarding the bidding out of a new tractor and selling the old on Purple Wave dot com. At ten twenty-eight, the commit, commission conducted a bid opening for environmental testing in the area of the former KC PNL power plant. Only one bid was received from Sunbelt Environmental Services Incorporated of Springfield, Missouri. The total bid for sampling and reporting results came to forty-two thousand, three thirty and sixteen cents. The group discussed the timeline and is not included in the bid. Also discussed was Evergy being able to do their own testing at the same time, as well as one of the commissioners observing the sampling. After discussion, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to award the bid to Sunbelt Environmental Services Incorporated. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, yes, yes. Clerk Rick stated that his office will no longer notify the county attorney of any litigation against the county. The commission would have to correspond directly. Additionally, the commission will have to correspond directly with Sunbelt Environmental Services directly, as well as Evergy, as there are too many unanswered questions in the bid and how they want to allow Evergy to test at the same place, same time. The commission discussed the testing timeline. At ten thirty-eight, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to go in closed session to discuss legal matters. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, yes, yes. At eleven thirty-seven, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to end the closed session. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, yes, yes. The commission agreed to continue with Ivan Trader's motion to dismiss the lawsuit against Chapter one hundred agreement until the amended petition order is issued from the court. Eleven thirty-seven, Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjust the meeting, to adjourn the meeting, I'm sorry. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote of yes, yes, yes.
I'll make a motion for those minutes.
The only question I would have about it is, I, and I'm just, because I honestly, I can't remember, but I don't think I actually accused Jim of knowing about the mission. I asked, I think the question, if we went back and looked, I, I think I asked him if he knew about it.
Okay. Thank you, that's true.
Fair enough.
Other than that, yeah.
Let's make a main segment with one correction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Closed session, that's.
This one, I will. I'm, I don't know what emails you guys have gotten from Ivan, so I'm kind of at a loss here.
I got one.
Did you get one? Okay. I don't know if you, Jake, this'll, this has been my, I know I got three.
Yeah, I'm giving you, you got a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah. The email that I got, what we had talked about, basically stated that he wanted, he didn't have, he was not, well, I'm, I'm just going to read you what his response. He said, to be clear, oh, this is what I said, I'm sorry. He basically said in his email to us that he could not withdraw Mauer's petition. Well, I mean, we all know, you can't, you can't sue me and me pull yours. That's not what we asked him.
Except he, they sued us.
Right.
Or the county.
Right.
They sued, they didn't sue us, they sued the county.
Right. But he, but, but he responded, because I'm going to read it, says, to be clear, the issue does not involve the county commission requesting to withdraw Mr. Mauer's petition. That's what he sent us in the email, that he could not do that. As stated yesterday, as well as in the phone conversation this morning, the issue I brought forth in yesterday's meeting is that the duly elected commissioners were denied their rightful role in reviewing and deciding how to respond to this lawsuit. I have attached the statement regarding the commissioner meeting, January eleventh. This was read in open meeting and a motion made to accept option A, which was for him to withdraw the motion to dismiss the lawsuit with a vote of two to one. He stated in that meeting that motion was not legal. After reading the statement, is it still your position that this motion and vote is illegal? I will tell you, I called him and I, he was, he was telling me all sorts of legal mumbo jumbo, and I got, I, I told him, I said, Ivan, I'm not going to argue with you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call the Attorney General and find out if what you're telling us is true. I will tell you, I have talked to the Attorney General. What he told us was not true. That is not right. We have every right to pull that, every right. He works, he said that, that they didn't sue the commission, they sued the county. I don't want to be the one to explain to him, because the Attorney General said, we are the county. We make the, the decisions for the county, therefore we are the county. So I don't, I, you know, I, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to get into the mumbo jumbo of that, but it was sure strange that after I wrote that, and I told him that I was going to call the Attorney General, that's when we got that email from him. And if you read the email from him, it talks about, he thought we were under the impression that we were asking him to pull Mauer's. We, but that, it was, it was made very clear in what I wrote to him when we were sitting here and we had him on the phone. He clearly understood what we were asking. We didn't ask anything about pulling Mauer's. He, we were talking specifically about pulling his, because that was the issue.
Now, the way I understood that, what we done was, we, we responded to the lawsuit we got, the county got. That's what he was doing, is responding to the county's lawsuit. Because, and it wasn't, it wasn't us suing anybody, it was us responding to that lawsuit. That's what I understood that whole subject, the matter is. And I'd have to have that clarified, because, because they are the ones that had filed suit, served papers on the county, so therefore he was responding for the county in our defense. Because as frivolous as a lot of misconception in the lawsuit. That's kind of the way I understood it. Did you, Jake?
Well, I thought it was filed wrong anyhow, so. On Mauer's part.
Yeah.
So.
But we have, we have no, because that's why he said, the judge has to decide whether it's frivolous or whether it goes on.
See, it sounded like once Mauer adjusted or did whatever, he could file it again and.
Yeah, he can do that.
So. Then that's what I understood was going to happen.
I mean, if that's, and, and you, you may be perfectly right, but my question still goes back to the fact that why would he send us an email telling us that he can't pull Mr. Mauer's petition?
He cannot, because Mr. Mauer sued us. That's.
That's right, but that's not what we asked him to do. We didn't ask him to pull Mr. Mauer's petition. What we asked him to pull was the motion to dismiss that the county sent. There's a difference.
What the county sent was a respond to Mauer's, to, to respond.
And that's what we asked him to pull. And that's what we asked him to pull.
It's, yeah, but, oh, just the notice to go to. We're not, we're not filing suit again, because what he done was respond to Mauer's request.
And what we did is we made a motion that passed to ask him to pull what he sent, his response is what we asked him to do. And now, all of a sudden, he's talking about us trying to pull Mauer's petition. Anybody in their right mind knows you can't do that.
What you had said, we would file suit again, Mauer.
When did I say that?
Well, because.
No, 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 stop, stop, stop. When did I say that, that we would do that?
Right after that.
No, I did not.
That's where.
No, I did not. All of this that we discussed was in, is on camera, Jim. No, I did not. What I said, and when we talked about it, was the fact that we would bring this back and discuss whether or not we want what we wanted to do with it. It has nothing to do with what Mauer did. We can't control that. Everybody, anybody that's got any common sense knows that you sue me, I can't pull your file. I can't pull your suit.
And he's told us that.
So why did he put it in here?
No, he told us that, he wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't.
So, so he can't read?
He clarified that.
No, no, so he couldn't read what we had already written to him? You're telling me there was, he, he didn't understand what we were talking about? Because if you're telling me he didn't understand what we asked and what we said, then I definitely think he's not the attorney for this county, because apparently he can't understand plain English. It was very, very, it was very, very simple. Did, did, I mean, did you guys not understand what we were asking to do?
I thought we settled it the other day.
I thought we did too.
Well, that, yeah, we, the reason we thought we settled it is because when we entered into closed session, what he told us, which come to find out is not true. That's why there, there's, I mean, if you're going to ask me if I'm going to believe him or the Attorney General, I can tell you which one I'm going to believe.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney General.
Maybe we need to talk to, talk to him again and ask, re-ask him. Get him on the phone.
Because he's not going to talk to anybody. All three of us have to be together and in closed session with Rick before we, we talk.
Okay.
And what, tell me why.
We won't just re-ask him.
Because that's what you said.
Been done.
That's what I said, what?
For not to talk to anybody, it has to come to the commission, and he wants all three together, because he knows there's a problem there.
Well, okay, so then why do we have to go into a closed session to talk about this? Well, this was already, this, this was already.
Because that's a client.
He works for us. I don't care what he wants. He works for us.
That is a client.
See, that's a reality thing.
It's kind of like you talking about who you talk to. You've got to bring out everybody, and they need to be present and talk about it too.
For what?
Well, what you're doing is going out on your own and doing that and talking to Attorney General. If you covered everything.
That's because if I'm told something, I, I told you, it's kind of like what you guys did before we got here. You should have never signed with them without consulting us, because we're the ones that going to deal with them. Not, not Rick and not Dale. It will be us. So if, 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 I'm, I'm telling you straight up, I don't trust him. I've told you that a thousand times. So if I don't trust him, you can bet I'm going to go to someone that I do, that is going to have a whole lot more legal knowledge than any of us sitting here and him also. If he is the head attorney general in the state, I'm pretty sure he's not going to give us bad advice.
That's fair. If he's had the same thing, he needs to re, he needs to talk to Ivan to get all that straight. You got to have both sides out in open. You got to, and that's where it's coming from. You've got your own thoughts, just like I said.
Jim, if I've got my own thoughts, then explain to me, like I said, he knew very well what we were asking him to do. I mean, are you telling me he didn't know what we were asking him to do? Because if he did, explain to me why he would have wrote that response, unless that's a CYA, because he knew there's a, there's a very good possibility the Attorney General is going to get involved in this. Why would he have written it that way? Why would all of a sudden? I mean, Jake, you knew what we were asking. Jim, are you telling me you didn't know what we were asking?
To ask her, you was wanting to withdraw the, the answer that he sent in.
Right.
That's what it is. That was not lawsuit two, and you're.
But that's not, no, see, that's not what he responded to though.
Mauer to, Mauer.
I never said anything about Mauer.
Clarified on what Mauer said, that yes.
I never said anything about Mauer. When we talked to him, I never said anything about Mauer. I never said anything about Mauer when we were in here. Honestly, I didn't know who that lawyer was until he said his name. But my question is, is when he responds to me, when he knows that I am going to call the Attorney General, and now all of a sudden, it's almost like he's confused about what we were asking him to do.
He responded to all three of us and Rick. That's what, no, this is Mark, and this went to all three. And he wanted everybody's email. Jake, you CC'd on that one too.
Yeah, I think I got that this morning.
And, and didn't he tell us that there was a statute that he could not withdraw that? And there is no statute.
He said it was court rules, is what he called it, which I don't know.
He called court rules.
So, so court rules. I never, that's why I told you I never heard anything like that in my life.
If it's a frivolous deal, and the way it understands, just like you've got five different things in there that was wrong, plus it was thirty days out, I would think you'd want to tell the judge, now this is what it is, can he go ahead and, and sue us?
Do you think that would not come up in a lawsuit? Do you think that he would have brought that up?
What you was asking is, hey, we're not going to say a word about it, it was a perfect lawsuit, and it wasn't.
No, what I, what I was, what I was asking.
He was responding to the lawsuit.
You're missing the whole thing.
And I'm, I know you're missing the whole thing.
Because what I, what I asked for was for it to come here, for us to decide if we were going to fight this, or if we were not going to fight this. We got circumvented, period. And now, he's scrambling to say, oh, well, I thought you wanted me to remove Mauer's petition. Where, where did, where did that come from? It was in writing, he got an email from me. I mean, if I need me, I can pull everything up and bring them to you.
Okay.
But.
I think you're wrong.
I, I, you thought I was wrong when, when we called him too? And I wasn't. Not according to the Attorney General, I wasn't. You can file a suit and you can pull it at any time.
And we didn't file a suit.
He filed a motion to dismiss, same thing. You can pull that at any time. Anytime.
Well, that, I, I'm not attorney, I don't.
No, but the Attorney General was.
Well, is he here to tell us that?
Nope, nope, he's not. But I can make sure that he shows, trust me. It's one phone call, and he will be. If that's the way you want to play this, I have no issue with it.
Okay. Okay. What do you think? We're going to have to get to the bottom of it.
I would say, we can go back and forth as, as long as we want, we just need to get everybody back, all the, everybody together.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do this? How about a few tables?
It's all started.
Table the closed session at a later, at a later date.
Say something. It's all started, just like here, that we done it. We spent almost two years working on trying to get the right answer for the Chapter one hundred. We didn't go into it frivolously just to be as smart as, but we really had thought through it. Now, to put you all through the first deal, first day, that didn't know and don't want to listen to some of it, I think Swan, I think Jake and you, y'all got to, Jake, I really think is accessible to listen to stuff, but you're not.
No, I'm, I'm very accessible, Jim.
You are not, except for what you want to be.
I don't want, I don't want, you, 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 if, if you want to talk about listening, you're really going to bring up listening to me when you had three hundred people over here of this county that you, that put you in office telling you, we don't want this, but you chose to do it anyway? So you're going to talk to me about listening, seriously?
What's the, okay. What do we do for table on this until later?
You can table it, it's not about. But if, if you think there's glaring mistakes in it.
You need to know now?
But I don't, I, I mean, I think it's pretty accurate of what happens.
I didn't see any mistakes, did you? You know what, honestly, I don't think I.
I mean, it's just a record of what.
See, I was trying to read it while talking and everything, so I, I didn't see any mistakes that I noticed.
I mean, I think what you, actually, Rick, I think what you wrote was actually.
You can go ahead and approve it, and we can file it, get it filed, but unless you think there's mistakes in, in the minutes, and that'd really be the only reason to table it.
Give Mark a chance to finish reading it in the.
Yeah.
I forgot to pee before the meeting. Dang it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that, because, yeah, everything that you, everything and the way that you said it is, I mean, it's factual. I may not agree with it, I may not think.
I was trying to give an after depiction of what happened, of course.
Right, exactly, yep. So, yeah, I'll second it.
You're making a.
Motion, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Motion made, seconded, except the minutes as presented, all in favor, say aye. I know, know, I'll back up a little bit. I don't know what I want to say aye yet, because I don't know, we, well, we tabled what we said.
I'd say this is just for the, the minutes.
Yeah, that's just the minutes.
Aye, aye, yes. Because the way I understood it, it's going to proceed, anything.
The minutes.
Motion's been filed. Well, that, that's.
We're going to be.
I need you to stand down for me. Mark, did you make a motion on that, or did you second that?
You did, yeah.
The other one's getting that second page fixed. The only other thing, I just got a couple things for you. The university extension meeting, excuse me, is next Tuesday. You should have received a letter in the mail from, from them inviting you to their annual.
Yes, yes, yes.
They need to know if you're going to make it or not, it is.
Did we get one individually?
Yeah, you should have gone.
It should have come in your house.
I haven't seen it yet.
It is next Tuesday at six PM, and it's at the Methodist Church.
I'm not going to be able to, in fact.
They just need to know. It's their annual meeting, so their new board members. University extension.
University. What they normally talk about.
Oh, they just share what's they done in the past year, and, you know, there'll be a student that kind of gives a presentation, and new board members get sworn in. It's about an hour, maybe hour and a half long.
At six?
Six PM at the Methodist Church.
Next Wednesday? Do they need a guarantee?
They need, just need to know for meal purposes.
Oh. I'll let you know later on. Will that work?
Yeah, just call me later.
I'll drive it home.
Thank you.
I'll drive it home.
Okay, I'll push down.
See, I got to make sure nothing's going on, especially before we head. Yeah.
Yeah, just call me when you, when you know.
Let's go ahead, take care of it. Yeah. Yes, you have to.
Be away from your wife and kids any longer than I have.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, good morning.
I love, the judge sent me up to ask you on what your thoughts were on this afternoon and tomorrow with the storm, you know, if you're, what you're thinking.
I believe it's going to be a bad day.
This afternoon or tomorrow?
No, this afternoon and then tomorrow.
Yeah, because they'll, we get as much as they can say.
Yeah, and I don't know.
The heaviest snow's not supposed to start around noon today, and by the end, we're saying somewhere between six and eight.
That's what?
The heaviest snow's not supposed to start about noon today, and then we're saying between six and eight, eight it just.
What's my end of the thing?
He's in a law day this morning, but he's planning on just going to live. So, you know, everybody does. So, you know, everybody doesn't have to come in this afternoon.
What do y'all think? I mean, really, if it's that bad, we're not going to get nothing done.
I think he's thinking about doing an order and closing our offices this afternoon and tomorrow, I think is what he's kind of contemplating.
I guess the big thing is I hate to dip, but, but this afternoon, if it goes all night, I guarantee you it's going to be a mess because you got to have the roads cleaned off or, just like I know none of your littered roads are going to be even cleaned. But the good thing about it, it's powdered still, it's not, worst thing is going to be the drifts. It's powdered still, you can go in to a lot deeper, a lot colorized.
Oh, it worries.
Anyway, I know this afternoon, it's going to get heavy, yes, somebody probably need to call. This afternoon, what do y'all think?
It was nice coming this morning.
I'd say use your judgment for this afternoon or that tomorrow is...
Well, we don't have a, if we're talking now, we've got to make it...
I apologize.
Otherwise, we've got to get home everybody to do that.
I would say go ahead and call them, to make it simple. It's, just figure that people aren't going to be able to get in. And if, if it gets bad tonight, then they're going to have a hard time getting home. So I don't want to be responsible for somebody's...
I know my opinion doesn't count as much, but I would close it this afternoon.
What?
I would close it around noon. I'm going to stay here no matter what.
I'm thinking in ten minutes.
Well, see, Mark, there's certain people, just like...
Ten minutes.
But I know like sheriff's offices, they don't take home, they're not going, can't do that. I mean, they'll have choices. But anyway, that's, that's fine with me if that's what y'all want to do too.
So how's this go forward?
We just, tell us, this is one, you want to go ahead and close it? And tomorrow morning, at least tomorrow morning.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have, if, if a road's all cleared, then we can call them.
Let me ask you, can we like definitely close it for tomorrow and then leave it like kind of in, like if you think you can't get home, you're still able to go? I mean, not necessarily close it, but if anybody's worried about, it's not going to be held against them if they just go home.
Well, you need, you need to let them know the worst thing is, you get, well, most offices, yeah, they can go. But as far as I'm concerned, if we know that, let's go ahead and say closed or...
Do they got to use their vacation time or how, how's this working out? It's in the policy.
It's in the policy.
Thank you. That's, that was my question.
It's in the policy. It's in the policy.
Before you have to use vacation time or whether we...
So if y'all want to, it's not going to, it's going to be whatever y'all want to do.
Even if the commission closes tomorrow.
Do you want to close it in afternoon and tomorrow? I mean, we can do that. That's the big thing, the whole thing. Like saying, if the judge is going to close it tomorrow, that's pretty well going to close a lot of it. That's been part of court, I'm saying. So as far as I'm...
Say, shut it down.
Go ahead and do it. That's all right?
Yep.
Okay.
So you definitely are...
Close it this afternoon or close it noon today and...
If that's what you guys are going to do.
I think that's kind of where he was leaning depending on what it did this morning.
I think that'd be a, that's kind of what they're saying.
Kelly, any kind of other people who are in here, is that, will that work for them?
Yeah, most of them are probably going to go home anyways as soon as they get whatever they can wrapped up this morning. They were trying, most everybody I've talked to was trying to get their stuff done so they could go before it got really bad.
So in this stuff, I, I'm not allowed to drive. Drive, I can drive, but this here, they won't let me drive, so it really kind of depends on you all, my opinion.
Yep, let's put it out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome back anytime. She's pretty good. Hard to make that decision when you're not exactly sure. Say, I'm used to having to go to work.
You're cutting into people's vacation time, then it flips out of it, you don't want to not let them go, they're not comfortable driving.
Yeah.
Well, you have to keep about your sidewalks and your parking lot and your, your maintenance people too, as well as keeping the courthouse open. I mean, those are things you have to consider, not just the people coming in.
Bad thing is just like him for tomorrow, if it stops snowing, they'll need to be working.
Right, they'll have time to get it cleaned up.
That's going to have to happen. Get it done before everybody comes in.
I like that idea.
That's the big thing.
I like it better now that I know the...
Handbook?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have it memorized yet. Working on it. So we do have on the agenda to go into closed session...
Okay.
At nine thirty.
You're late.
You're late.
Nine thirty five.
After nine thirty.
You want me to tell, before, is somebody here that we're going to go into closed session?
Ah, sure.
Kelly's the one here. Kelly's the one.
I heard I was here some dudes.
But not a minute after she says...
That was good.
I'm not in a rush.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, because Jim and I had talked about this before you got here. I got ahold of Chris Schaefer with Sunbelt. They are, they're waiting to get in. They use stainless steel canisters and stainless steel utensils so that when they do their testing, there's no contamination issues. They're supposed to be in by the end of this week, middle of the end of this week. So I told him, I said, I still had to get ahold of Chuck from Evergy. And what I told, what's his name, Chris, was that as soon as I talked to him, why don't we plan on the following week, one day, I got, told him I'd need to give Chuck two or three days so he could coordinate, make sure his guys can be there. But he, Chris is supposed to let me know the day that they come in, so that, that, the way I can get ahold of Chuck, because I've already talked, I talked to Chuck last night. Told him what we'd found out, this is who we had, this is how much it was, and that I was waiting for him to get his, I basically told him everything I just told you, waiting for him to get his stuff in. And that what I would do is as soon as he called me, I would call him. We could set up a time two or three days after. So I'm going to figure it's probably, you're probably about a week and a half out. And then, because he told me they could do it fairly quick. Now, I don't know as far as like we talked about with the ground being frozen, I don't know how that, because I asked him about that and he said that does play a part in it. So we'll have to find out, or I'll have to find out when I call him back, get a little bit more detail so we, you know, okay, if, if, if you can do it, then how much is this going to affect it? Or do we need to wait until the ground's got frozen, which hopefully that's not the case because it'd be March, so...
Luckily enough, we're not far from March.
Yeah, yeah.
It must be pretty nice next week, though. Fifty, sixty's. Oh, then it'll be...
Yeah, it'd be hard.
It'll be really soft.
But he said, and just so you know, Jake, I told him that, I had talked to Mark already, that Mark was going to be there and Mark told me EPA and DNR wants to be there. So I told him, I said, okay, but here's my concern. I said, I don't want you talking to them. I said, and Mark is going to be there kind of playing, stay away. He basically told me, he said, what, the only time that they would talk to them is at the very beginning before everybody got started because everybody tests different. Well, that actually can change your readings. So what he was going to do is he was going to let everybody know, this is how we do it, find out how they do it, and then the paper that we get back is going to all show like we tested this spot this way, everyone else tested like this. That way, we're, we're going to have a one hundred percent clear picture of how it was done.
Get on the same page.
Right, right.